She's right up there.
All right. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move on to the roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Councilmember Sonmore.
Present, attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. Next is the consent calendar. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through C.
Oops, I skipped something.
Come back to it.
We'll go back to that. Okay, we'll continue with consent calendar. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and now we'll go back to number two, which is public comment.
We have William Page. Five minutes at the podium.
Is the light on when you press it?
I'm good. Okay, great. Mayor, Mayor Protem and the City Council. And a couple of days ago, you know, I saw a picture on Facebook. And as a member of the Mount Lake Terrace City Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, I felt like I had to say something. You know, we, I think it's a beautiful thing when amongst our judges that are running to be elected, you know, there is diversity. You know, we have a few, three people that are running for a particular judgeship, and one of them is a black Latino female. That's the diversity part. The other two candidates, you know, are white males. So it's a nice change from what we've seen in the past. Equity, I believe, is that opportunity to be able to run for office and be out there with the public, be seen, be heard, in a whole bunch of different forms, whether it's speaking to people or having placards posted around the county so that those individuals can see who's running, who they want to vote for. You know, and the inclusion is being able to be included in all of those things that matter when it comes to voting. Having a safe space to let people know who you are, where you are, and what you're running for. And right here in our own city, on the corner of 56th and 232nd, someone referred to it as the road path to City Hall. Judge Mary Anderson's placard, you know, was defaced, ripped down and thrown to the ground. I guess a whole lot of people can think of a whole lot of reasons why maybe it might have happened, you know, but I, in myself, shell, Sarah, ask myself, is it because she's a female? Is it because she's a female of color? You know, is it because she's running against those that are not of color? I think that the city needs to address this and should not take it lightly, because that is darn any other signs being ripped down, okay, that I know of in the city. So I just wanted to make that comment. I think that is appropriate. I think the City Council should be abhorred by it, because that's not what Mount Lake Terrace is supposed to be about. You know, I'll tell you one quick story, and then my time's up. Okay, when I first moved here to Mount Lake Terrace, my wife, Ellen, and I, first moved here, you know, April of 2020, we decided to take a walk. We went down, we live over, right over in 228th, we took a walk down 66, and we got to around the 222nd block. And as we were walking down the street, I happened to look down, and there was like a freshly made part of the pavement that had been redone. And then it was a swastika carved into the pavement that had dried over. And, you know, my wife and I looked at each other and go, where did, what did we move to? Is this really what we should expect? We went home, I called the city. I got a person named Virginia Klauff over the phone and told her what we saw, and she said, we'll look into it right away. The next day, later on that day, we go by, and it had been taken care of. That's the Mount Lake Terrace that I decided I wanted to become a part of. So I hope we can continue to move forward, you know, to address things like this and take care of things, you know, immediately, at least make a statement, let folks know that not here, not here. Thank you.
If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to speak, please use the hand raise tool. Going once, going twice. That concludes public comment as far as signups.
All right. And no one in the audience? Okay, thank you so much. Next, we're going to be reading the proclamation for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I would like to have Daniel Singson come up with me to the podium. And we'll read this and then talk about domestic violence. Okay, City of Proclamation, City of Mount Lake Terrace Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. And whereas, the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial and social segments of our society. And whereas, men and women alike must recognize the scope of this social problem and work together to create a community that does not tolerate domestic violence. And whereas, the City of Mount Lake Terrace encourages all residents to take a stand against domestic violence in their personal relationships and in our community. Now, therefore, I, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, Mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, on behalf of the City Council, proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, signed the second day of October 2023 at the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington. And I'm going to present this to Daniel Singson, our Domestic Violence Coordinator at, in our Police Department. And I would like for her to say a few words about, I guess we'd get a photo first. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words about domestic violence and the purple?
Purple, Purple Light Nights. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for having me tonight, City Council. It's nice to see you. We have not done this in several years. So it's nice to be back. It's like the one-time show I get to come and talk to you guys, so I appreciate it. So thank you for honoring Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I've been the Domestic Violence Coordinator for the City of Mount Lake Terrace for almost 18 years, and I am happy to serve in that role, clearly, because I'm still here. And it, over that span of time, not much has changed, honestly. We had a small anomaly during COVID where people stopped calling 911. That didn't mean that domestic violence stopped happening. But other than that, the stats have been pretty consistent around domestic violence in this community. So we had a very weird September where we had a lot of domestic violence last month, which was unusual for the month of September. So just interesting times, I think. But thank you for having me. We are doing our 17th, no, our 16th Annual Purple Light Nights campaign. I had brought some purple light bulbs with me, if anybody wants one. The whole point around Purple Light Nights, which was founded in Maple Valley, actually, in the Covington area, by their task force there, is to shine purple lights throughout the month of October to let victims know that the community is aware that this is a problem. So if you're a survivor, it lets them know that we understand your struggle. If you're still living with domestic violence, it lets them know that people are thinking about you and they support you. So if anybody here would like a purple light bulb, I'm happy to pass them out, or just come by the Police Department anytime this month. Gotcha. And we'll make sure you get one. Sure.
Danielle, what are some good resources for the public if, whether you're experiencing domestic violence or otherwise?
Absolutely. Because we're on the King County/Snowomish County line, we're kind of in a special place where victims can go to King County if they need to feel safer. Sometimes seeking services in the same place where your abuser is is not safe. So in Snohomish County, we have one place. It's Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County. I think several of you have signed on to go to their fundraiser later this month. Thank you for that. And they are the only game in town in Snohomish County for those kinds of services. However, not very far away, we have an organization called New Beginnings. It's in North Seattle, and they do really good work as well. So depending on what a victim is experiencing, I might even send them as far away as Bellingham to get services, because that's where they might feel safe. But locally, Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County and then New Beginnings. Anything else?
Does anyone out there want some purple lights?
Oh, wow. It's exciting. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
I just want to say that if you put the light bulb on your porch, it gets very dark. So put it someplace else, probably in your front window, which is the best place. I did that one year, but now I have cats.
That's a good point. For a long time, we were telling people to display them in their porch light, and that was the intent of it, but they just don't shine enough light. But the good news is October is also Halloween time, and so there's lots of people with lots of crazy lights everywhere. So they kind of just blend right in. So thank you, everyone. And please, if anybody has any questions around our response to domestic violence, what the Police Department is doing, or what's happening in the community, I'm at the Police Department. Come find me anytime, shoot me an email, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Councilmember Sonmore, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Danielle's hard work for the past 18 years. We don't get to see her very often, but every time I see her, I want to give her praise and thanks for everything she does. She not only helps women, but you think about the children and the men who are also in these situations, or seniors that have domestic violence. And I was going to ask her if any other cities are offering this service. I know when we started this, there weren't a lot of other cities, so she was helping other cities as well. But in the past, we've had to look at even possibly eliminating this position. And I can adamantly say, I hope we never, ever, ever consider that again, because what she does in our community is absolutely amazing.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. There are a few cities in our region is a special, is a special place, because when Mount Lake Terrace was the flagship agency to start something like this with a grant, we had a domestic violence prosecutor, a domestic violence advocate, and my position, the coordinator position inside the Police Department. And it was very dynamic. Unfortunately, as funding has changed, it's just me now. But Linwood Police Department developed a domestic violence coordinator position, and that person is very busy. Edmund's Police Department has a domestic violence coordinator. And actually, the coordinator from Linwood has started a side business called Bridge Coordinating Services, where she has developed a nonprofit that hires domestic violence coordinators on a part-time basis and places them in police departments that can't afford the FTE. So she carries the benefits, the everything. And then she's expanded to quite a few agencies in Snohomish County. So these services of getting into victims' lives as soon as the crisis is happening with law enforcement and wrapping services around them is happening all over Snohomish County, and that's not happening in other counties. So we should be very thankful that we have these services here, that our victims are getting services, and that we're able to make referrals directly to supportive services as soon as possible. So thank you for your question, Councilmember Sonmore. It's nice to see you. I have not seen you in many years, but it's nice to see you. Anything else?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next is the presentation of the Proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. And Councilmember Murray, are you going to take care of this?
So I'm excited. So we actually made a proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month back on September 5th, because National Hispanic Heritage Month started on September 15th. And so from September 15th to October 15th, we are celebrating the histories, cultures and contributions of American citizens whose roots can be traced across the Americas, indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa and beyond. And so wanted to take the opportunity to welcome one of our founding Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commissioners back to the city to help us celebrate the celebration over the course of the month of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And so wanted to give you the opportunity. So we have Alvaro Guillen here, who is the director now of Connect Casino Road. Is that correct? Would you like to share a little bit about what you've been up to since you served on the DEI Commission?
Sure, absolutely. Mayor, council members, and city staff, and DEI Commissioners, thank you for presenting me for this declaration of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Since I left the position, I have joined an organization in South Everett, where we work with, mostly with immigrant communities. It's a community center where we have 24 partners co-located at a single location, as a safe space, where families can receive a different opportunities, economic opportunities, programs and resources to improve their lives and their families. I'd like to take this opportunity also to let you know that, and encourage you to recognize the contributions of the Hispanics, not only one night, but actually throughout the year in different ways. Many of Hispanics are working a really hard, difficult and poor labor conditions as we speak, just here in the backyard of our city, in Snohomish County and east of the mountains, where I have witnessed with my family, working many Hispanics on the fields at temperatures of close to 100 degrees, in dense smoke and poor conditions. And these are people that are working hard to bring food to the grocery stores, to bring fruits and fresh vegetables so that we can afford them, and sadly, they can't afford them. So I like to take this opportunity to encourage you in acquiring position of power, the public, the DEI Commissioners, that in your different capacities, to advocate for them and as possible, work to bring change to these communities. But tonight, this is about the celebration, and I, again, I thank you, all of you, for presenting this proclamation to me, and I accept it on behalf of all the Hispanics in our city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now we'll move on to our review and approval of the ordinance for the City Council Protocol Manual with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, won't go over the full memo. Council has seen this on a couple of different occasions, on September 14th, September 18th, and again, or September 18th was the last review. Wanted to go over a couple of changes I made from the initial section. Some of those changes you saw last time. Just making clear in Section 2.05 that-
Can we have a timeout then?
I'm sorry, I'm very confused. Did I doze off? I didn't actually hear the proclamation read into the record.
It was read before.
Yeah, we- Good lord. We did it on September 5th. Oh, I was out. Okay, I'm like, what is going on? Okay, thank you. Yeah. Okay. It's all good. Section 205, we just made it clear that annually, at the first meeting of the council, the council shall decide by the majority present to appoint a Mayor Protem. So there was a question about whether that was annually or not, so we made that change. Section 807 added the provision where if more than 20 people sign up, that the comment time period is automatically limited to three minutes. Also changed the term "business agenda" to "regular agenda" to make that more clear to folks. And then the two-hour time limit was changed to three, but can be extended at any time by a majority vote of the council. And added the language, "City Council may amend their protocol manual at any time at their sole discretion." So just making it very clear that this is in your authority and ability to suspend this if need be. And I also have made a couple of revisions, just cleaning stuff up from the last version you saw, minor technical changes for council boards and commissions, just reflecting your past practice, which has been, council boards and commissions are selected on the basis of seniority. So you go and select your boards and commissions, and then everybody is appointed by a single vote. So we don't need a vote on each appointment. That's in Section 2.07. Also, in Section 7.05, that I recommend a city attorney, should we ever have a need to go through that process again, but then council confirms that selection. Just make that clear. I believe that has been past practice, but we wanted to make sure that was written down. And then a few other items related to the agenda development and how that works and kind of the timeframes associated with that. And those are in Sections 8.05 and 8.06. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, first off, you said you also, did we see those changes that you made to the agenda? You said you made them since the last meeting, because I'm just asking because it says to approve September 18th, 2023 edition, and I didn't know when those changes had been made. So I didn't know if we had gone over them at that meeting.
Yeah, they, it's, it doesn't change the meaning of any of the language in the protocol manual. It's just, in the protocol manual, the version that was presented on the 14th and the 18th, there was a notation about an agenda planning committee. And wanted to make that clear, that we changed that from Agenda Planning Committee to City Manager, since agendas are developed as part of the executive leadership team meetings on Tuesday mornings. And that really was the only change.
And then, may I ask, this is just technical, so 301 talks about secretarial services, and kind of that's a passe term. I looked it up just to make sure, but maybe we could change that to either administrative services. It said in there, and the reason I'm bringing it up, it says that it's an outdated term, and it, one of the things I read about it, it said it's a connotation for a former using work wife. I've never heard that before, but that's just, just in case anybody, I mean, it doesn't, I just didn't want to offend anybody by that term. And then my last one, I actually said, 1003, it says, "A city attorney will interpret the protocol for the mayor." Why can't it be for the whole council?
Sure. So in the protocol manual itself, it does say that the city attorney provides advice in that section, I believe it's 7.05. It identifies the council as a whole as the body that the city's, the city attorney services are rendered to. So we can certainly change mayor to council there.
Oh, thank you, because it's just in 1003, it just, it just calls out the mayor only. And so then you'd have to cross-reference it with that section. And then my last question is, where are the markups for Section 2.80? I read the ordinance a couple times, and I'm trying to under, it says in the title, "Amending Our Mimicidal Code, Chapter 2.8, Related to Council Ethics." And there's about 11 sections in that, but I didn't have a markup. And so I'm trying to understand what is being changed in 2.8?
So there is nothing that's going to be changed in 2.80. We had initially considered taking out some sections of 2.80, but because 2.80 also applies to boards and commissions, we did not want to change anything that's associated with the ethics portion of the code as it relates to boards and commissions. So that 2.80 is not being modified, just 2.10, and then the protocol manual itself.
So then can we change the ordinance to remove amending Chapter 2.8? Because I know it says, if there's any differences, but the title says amending 2.80.
Yeah, and we can certainly, that's what I believe to be a scrivener's error, because the only notations in Section 2 of the ordinance say that we amend Chapter 2.10.
Right.
And we'll have, we'll have the appropriate one for signature.
You have any more questions? Okay, is anyone else here? Okay, Mayor Protem?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. With no further questions, I will move to approve the ordinance adopting a protocol manual as presented and amended as discussed.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we need discussion? Just vote? All in favor? Oh, did you have a, did you want a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, really more of a comment. I just want to say thank you. Again, as a council member who is just shy of five years, and my onboarding came in the midst of quite a bit of chaos in the world, it's nice to know that we have this document moving forward. I think it's a great baseline for anyone coming in, even more importantly, for somebody who's thinking about perhaps running down the future. So I was happy to hear that. It sounded like our city clerk said that it is on the website. So I do encourage our residents, especially those of you who are thinking ever of running, to have a look at it, and you can get a chance to see, well, what it's like to sit up here, at least on paper. So again, thank you for that work. I know it didn't take, it wasn't easy, and then we had a wonderful process. Thank you also, Councilwoman Sonmore, for your detailed going through this line by line, this time as well as previous.
All right, we'll vote now. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the review and approval of the 2021 financial statement. Okay, so next is the review and approval of the 2021 Financial Statement and Accountability Audit with our Finance Director, Janelle Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, and residents of Mount Lake Terrace. Today I'm bringing to you the review and approval of the 2021 Financial Statement and Accountability Office from the Office of the Washington State Auditor. So they are auditing our 2021 financial statements and doing an accountability audit. This needs to be signed by the mayor and the city manager. And the cost for this will be $129,500 plus other expenses, if any. The independent auditors report, this is just an estimate of when they'll have it done. And the reason it's 2021 and not 2022 is because we're a little bit behind on our audits. We just finished the 2020 audit some months prior, and so now they are working on the 2021 audit. And eventually we'll be caught up with 2022, and then 23 will be over soon. So this will be happening every year, and I'll be bringing this to council every year. It's a requirement by legislature that most cities will be audited by the state auditor. We have a bar system, all of that, all of our accounting, and everything goes through the state. So what they're going to go through in our audit is they'll go through the financial statements, they'll look at the government auditing standards that are issued in the United States of America, they'll look at GAAP, they'll look at everything that you could think of that has to do with an audit. So this is just the approval of that cost.
Mayor, if I may, what's GAAP stand for?
Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, the United States of America. All right, there's a lot of GASB, and that's another acronym, and there are a lot of acronyms with governmental accounting.
There's way too many. And if you don't understand, I think you just ask, because otherwise you're going to be lost until the very end.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if we can audit the amount that the state is charging us for auditing our books.
Yes, we get an invoice every month from them. And you guys, if you want to see the detail behind those invoices, you can. So they spend hours and hours, and they do a lot of it remotely, which is pretty nice. And they have a platform that we log into, and we deposit all of our information on, so. Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just clarification on the recommended motion. We're approving the letter. Should, do we need to authorize the mayor and city manager? All right, well then, move to approve the 2021 Audit Engagement Letter from the Washington State Auditor's Office.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, or Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, members of the community. Just a couple of things to mention tonight. I had a pretty heavy manager's report during last Thursday's work session, so just a couple other items to mention. First, we have an Eagle Scout that has completed a new project in Terrace Creek Overlook. Ken, we'll be working with him to facilitate getting the area cleaned up, taking some pictures, and then making a presentation to council in the near term. So that should be on your agenda coming up in the next few weeks. We are also paving at Bicentennial Park, which is, what I understand, has been a very long-term project, being done mostly with volunteers, but we're doing the final bit of it now, and we'll have that complete very shortly. And last thing I wanted to mention is your joint meeting Wednesday night at 6:00 p.m. here with members of the Planning Commission and members of, with members of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. Starts at 6:00 p.m., I believe is slated to go until 8:30. So we'll all have an interesting evening, learning all about comprehensive plans and what that means for us. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city manager. I guess not a question so much as a comment. Maybe I missed the announcement, but I noticed, since it's getting darker in the evenings, that we have a new lighted crosswalk signal across 236th at 52nd. And I just wanted to thank city staff for that. I know that was an issue that a community member had highlighted and brought forward, and a very helpful lighted signal as we start to get into these evening hours. And so I noticed it as I was driving through, kind of at dusk this weekend, and somebody was utilizing it. So just wanted to share appreciation both for hearing feedback from our community as well as moving that forward. And that was a nice added safety feature that I saw as I was out and about this weekend. So thank you for that.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
For fear that you covered this last week when I wasn't here, and I was online, clearly asleep. What's the status on 66th? I thought that was going to be something. I drive by it all the time, but I haven't seen anything.
Yeah. We are working with the contractor. We've told the contractor that their contract days have started. So public works contract, they have a set number of days in order to complete the work. Because of the weather that we had last week, really slowed down what was going to, what was happening there. But the intention at this point, at least in the year, is to finish, they call it side work. It's the curb gutters, you know, the pieces out on the side of the roadway, and actually pave, beginning when it starts to get warmer next year. We missed the window, unfortunately, but we will get that paved, and it's definitely still on the docket and going to get done.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, while we're talking infrastructure and curb cuts, et cetera, I've received a few questions and comments from folks around town the last couple of weeks about, I think, chip seal, but specifically some of the finish work around sewer covers, et cetera. Passing through there lately, it seems like perhaps that's been addressed, but there were some bumpy rides where chips, chip seal around manhole covers, et cetera, were an issue that were expressed to me, and perhaps that's been addressed already. And then I was curious about, some other questions about the timeline on some of the recent work that's going on at 236th and Van Rye, and the new, I think, island that's going in there, and some of the other sort of roadway improvements over there. So perhaps that's, could, you know, show up in a future meeting's update. But those are all things I'm hearing about from our neighbors.
Okay. So the chip seal project was done, we were able to get that done before the weather started. They laid down what's called a fog seal on top of it, kind of make sure all the rocks stay together. They did run a street sweeper through right after the fog seal went down and got a lot of the rocks, the loose pebbles picked up. There were still a few left, but not nearly as many as I am used to for a brand-new chip seal project. So it was really, really well done. We're going to run another street sweeper through there in about a month, just to pick up everything else. I have not heard issues about the sewer manhole covers, but I will look into that and make sure I get an answer to you, along with 236th and Van Rye. Make sure I get an answer for council on that as well. I do know that they are out putting thermoplastic down for the stop bars right at the intersections. That work should be completed hopefully this week, assuming weather holds. But I'll get answers to those other questions and make sure I get feedback back to council.
Great. I'll try to get you a location as well.
That'd be great.
All right, anyone else? Okay, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
All right, so next is the council liaison reports. Shall I start over there with Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you kindly, Mayor. Let's see, on the 19th, the Lake Ballenger-Macalure Creek Forum met, and I would say the major takeaway here, because we might have mentioned we were leaning that way, but now it's official, is that we are no longer at inter-local agreement. We let that lapse, and there were a lot of pros and not as many cons. We're going that route. The biggest pro will come out in the pudding, if you will, which I don't know what that expression is, I just made that up. Nonetheless, is that some of the pressures that have been put on our staff to keep this going, that's the minutes, the location, everything that gets everybody in the same room at the same time, Zoom links and all that, including the technology, will now spread to the cities. So I'm really happy about that, as is our staff, and the other cities are very welcoming and excited to be taking on this responsibility. The other thing that we agreed, if I remember correctly, and I say this correctly, is that currently there are four of us. And so next year, as in 2024, the easy way to think about it is we'll have four meetings. So we'll still be doing it quarterly, but we'll rotate through the cities, which is pretty exciting for a lot of reasons. Even if we stay remote, it will still, again, be helpful for the various staffs, and they can support each other a little bit more robustly and a little bit more creatively. Of late, we haven't just been focusing on Ballenger Lake or Macalure Creek, we've been talking about the much larger watershed. And then just too, for anybody who's really curious and paying attention, I think you know on the Edmonds side, there's a house that's been a major problem, probably from the day it was built. Flood zone issue and all that good stuff. Well, the city of Edmonds is a little bit closer to purchasing that and then resolving it finally. A big shout out to the residents on that side of the lake who have been keeping track of what's going on over there and alerting the cities and anything is potentially hazardous or just out of place. Moving forward, on the 21st, I had the honor of going up to the Snohomish County Council. Actually, I think we were in the judges area. I don't remember, actually. Anyway, it was a human rights talk. Human Rights Commission put on a talk looking at keeping it simple white supremacy activity here in Snohomish County. It might surprise people to learn that we're in the top five for most active white supremists right here in good old Lake Stephens. If you've visited there, there's actually some well-known spaces for skinhead activity. And I am not saying anything that isn't on public record, so feel free to look it up yourself. But you don't have to, because there's a big event coming up that's going to face this nastiness head-on. I apologize not having the date in front of me, but maybe one of my colleagues who also attended will have that. There's an actual big event coming up where I will be talking specifically about this form of domestic violence, or excuse me, domestic terrorism, I should say. Moving forward, on the 22nd, we had the MLT Arts of Terrace. And I think what I'm saying there is, I showed up for a wonderful ceremony in this beautiful chamber, and it was absolutely gorgeous. It was completely full. And so I'll just leave it there, because we have a commissioner who can speak a lot more to, excuse me, a council member who can speak more to it. But just know that was amazing. Just always humbling to see artists, let alone a collection of artists and their supporters. That next day, the 23rd, is Saturday. Congratulations to Latino Education Training Institute on the wonderful gala. I had a chance to participate and attend that. The next week, on the 26th, I had a chance to go to the library and volunteer for a couple of hours for our art show. Always awesome to just get out and volunteer, but more importantly, to be out in that space, because you just never know who you're going to run into. And I had an opportunity to run into quite a few people I hadn't seen in a while, some pre-COVID, so that was really excited, exciting for me. And of course, it was just an amazing show. Closing it out, on the 28th, I had the opportunity to participate in Evergreen Treatment Services. They're out of King County called Roots and Recovery. They work on much of what we've been talking about, domestic violence, homelessness. There's a lot of issues that they cover ground and work with some of our most, some of our most vulnerable populations. They had an amazing keynote speaker, and it was just an overall good experience to, again, talk about some very troubling matters, but then to put money towards trying to resolve those. We also had our study session that evening, and then that morning, I woke up and then presented as our host, emcee, and storyteller at Hope is Brewing. And thank you for anyone who was able to attend or watch the recording. And that will be the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the art show, the grand opening piece on September 22nd, and I can't believe how long our art show has been around. And I just really want to thank our volunteers. I was on that board for a number of years, and it's a wonderful board. And a special thank you to Connor, being our president of the art board and commission, but to all the, you know, Bonnie and everybody, Councilman Ryan's wife, Judy, just everybody who is on that commission, all the hard work they do. I saw them last Friday, or last Sunday, giving back the artwork, and I know they're pretty exhausted. So a special shout out to them and a special thank you, because it's a wonderful art show. And then also on my next report out is September 27th, I was a part of City Manager Review Committee. So don't forget to look at the email that you got from Andrew, and make sure you have an appointment with him. And I think all the appointments are next week. And that's all I have to report, except one more comment, is the Bicentennial Park that I just heard about. They are doing the front phase of the trail. I saw a lot of people out there yesterday, and I think the day before, and it looked like it was almost finished up today. So a special shout out to them. That park is looking wonderful, and they have just reseeded some of the grass there. So it'll be just beautiful for spring. So thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll start on the other side with Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. On September 20th, we had our monthly DEIC meeting. We had a robust agenda. Things probably helpful for these, for everyone here to know, Jonathan Morales from our staff came along with a member of the OTACs, a couple of members of the OTAC staff, actually, and gave a presentation on a racial equity tool for the comprehensive plan, which was really interesting and informative. We had an update on the DEI consultant search, which sounded like it was in a great spot, and I'm sure we will have an update on that soon. It was a really good and robust conversation about some of, some DEI-related council proclamations. And so I looked a little bit at some of the proclamations that we have made, and gave space for the commissioners to share thoughts. And I think that is something that they will continue to think about and have conversation about here moving forward. There was some sharing about some possible organizations and activities to plug into, and that was kind of the high-level takeaways from that meeting. To follow up on Councilmember Woodard's report, so on the 21st, I also attended the Snohomish County Resist Hate Event hosted by the Snohomish County Human Rights Commission and one of their commissioners, Demi Chatters. The event, I did find it. I had to look it up, but it is, so the event that Councilmember Woodard mentioned is a community forum with author David Newhart. I think, I don't, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, but it is at Everett Civic Auditorium on Thursday, October 26th, from 6:30 to 8:30. And so that, again, is kind of a follow-up conversation on extremism and hate. And so that is sponsored by Unidos, I think is how you say it, the Committee, and the Committee Against Hate and Violent Extremism. On the 27th, we, as Councilmember Sonmore mentioned, we had our city manager performance evaluation kickoff. The 28th was our work session. The 29th, I plugged into some of, PSRC had a kind of a learning session, From Pandemic to Prosperity Downtown's Reimagined, which I thought was, was super interesting, and haven't had a chance to really go back and dig in my notes around, but I thought it was interesting learning about kind of some of the demographic shifts in downtown areas and kind of, you know, some of the work that's being done to reimagine how, how we bring folks together in urban spaces. folks together in urban spaces. And then on the 30th, attended Girls on the Run Snohomish County's fundraiser, they are a nonprofit that's actually based here in Mount Lake Terrace, and so they do a lot of good work, working with young women in our community to help them navigate and learn, you know, navigate kind of self-esteem issues and learn teamwork and all of that good stuff, along with the, the foundation of running. So that is my report for, oh, and I guess I will just share my plug and reminder that it's the week without driving, so for those of you that thought, that are joining me, very exciting, for those who are thinking about maybe plugging in for a day, there's still a whole six, seven days left to do so, so would definitely encourage folks to think about it, or at least think about how you might navigate one of your days if you didn't have access to a vehicle, and I'm sure you'll hear me talk lots more about this when I get my report next time, but wanted to mention it specifically, because there's still a chance to participate, and for those who have kiddos in schools, Wednesday is Walk, Roll, and Bike Day to school, so if you have the opportunity to perhaps intentionally get to school that way, particularly if you usually are driving and dropping off, would encourage you to, to participate, and also would just let that be a reminder to folks in our community to be a little even more cautious than I'm sure everyone already is when you are navigating the roads on Wednesday. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On September 22nd, I attended our Arts Commission preview and award ceremony that evening here, and then I helped with the art show from the 23rd through the 30th Saturday, and would like to thank our city manager for the help with himself and the staff, which included Parks and Rec Department, events coordinator, I can't think of the department, it's custodian, it's Barry, but helping out. The city council stopped by and especially volunteering their time to work the show. I wasn't there the entire day, but I did see council member Woodard there, appreciate you sitting and welcoming people in and monitoring the art. I'd like to especially thank the Arts Commission for all their work to put on the event and get the jurors there to adjury in three different areas of art, and know how to hang art up and, and not break anything, so that's really good. And then I was at the work-study session on the 28th, and that's the end of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On September 21st, I was also in attendance at Snohomish County Human Rights Resist Hate Event with council members Woodard and Murray. On the 27th, I participated in the, our sort of check-in or prelude to the City Manager Evaluation with, with Andrew, and also participated in last week's work session, and that's it for this period. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potamawal?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, so since I was in Morocco, helping with the recovery efforts, I have to go back to the beginning of the month for all my reports, but I did want to highlight the millennia, we could all learn something from Morocco's millennia of openness and cooperation with other cultures. If you didn't know, Morocco was the first country to recognize the United States as a new independent country. Some other quick things, Morocco has a very vibrant night market, and guess what else? They have a lot of water features. You wonder where I get some of my ideas for what I bring up here, but it was a great trip. So going back to the 6th of September, met with the mayor and city manager with Snohomish County Councilmember Mead to talk about Mount Lake Terrace priorities and funding opportunities through the county. On the 7th, I had the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Board meeting, where we recommended non-voting seats on the boards, recommended approval of Pierce County, county-wide planning policies, reviewed climate grants that are now available for the new planning requirements through Department of Commerce. We reviewed the Affordable Housing Developer Outreach and information about challenges to providing affordable housing, had a report from the Equity Advisory Committee on best practices, data and research and guidance on addressing equity and policies in comprehensive plan updates, and engagement and outreach and anti-displacement issues, as well as awareness and guidance. So again, a lot of resources through the Puget Sound Regional Council available for us, and reviewed data trends related to regional demographic transit, transportation, and safety, climate, population, housing growth, and job changes here in the, throughout the region. On the 9th, participated in the Day of Service, thanking all of our volunteers who are involved in the community. On the 13th, met with, oh, let's see, that was the Affordable Housing, that was when the mayor and city manager and I met with Chris Collier on the Affordable Housing Alliance. Later that evening, we participated in the Terrace Talk. On the 27th, had the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, where we adopted the new dues, welcomed Derrington as a new member, had the presentation from Commerce on housing requirements and resources, had the, reviewed the Affordable Housing Alliance's work plan and budget, and a market update. On the 27th, had the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee meeting, where we reviewed the PSRC Economic Development Strategy, Comprehensive Plan Update Resources, Strategy Development, Technical Assistance, and Supporting Local Efforts, as well as some federal funding opportunities. Had a report from the Snohomish County Workforce Development, kind of related to low unemployment and need for attracting talent. We've got 37% making less than 40, 37% of our workforce in Snohomish County is making less than $40,000 a year. Fund, so the funding opportunities for programs, oh, sorry, funding opportunities for programs related to workforce development are declining, and so we have created a Future Workforce Alliance, okay, might have to read this, sorry. All right, so we, the, because of the challenges we're facing, we have set a region's Strategic Action Plan to leverage resources and help increase jobs, increase skills and training opportunities through an organization called Workforce, Future Workforce Alliance, so that's something we might want to reach out and get some more information on, and be happy to share what I learned through the meeting. And then we also had an update from the Snohomish County on the Snohomish County Comp Plan Update process and the status. Interestingly, they are at the stage now where the Planning Commission is starting to consider the countywide comprehensive plan update, and the county council is expected to start deliberations in March. Then on the 28th, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board met and reviewed the Washington State Fairies Update, had a review of the regional safety plan and PSRC legislative priorities. On the 28th, we had the work, our, our work-study session, and then earlier today, had the legislative, had the opportunity to join in the legislative bus tour, where we got the chance to highlight some of the things going on here in Mount Lake Terrace, and then the mayor and I met with the city manager, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. I forgot the bus tour online. So I have a very, very short, short list here. I'm going to add that I attended the Edmonds Art Walk on the 21st, because it only, if we change our meetings, I will miss every Edmonds Art Walk from now on, and I, I like to go and see what they're doing over in Edmonds, because I would like to have an art walk here someday, and a wine walk, and a market, and a lot of other things. The night market at the International District is closing. Just let I let you know. And then on the 20, the 22nd, I also attended the Mount Lake Terrace Art Show reception, and we moved it to this council chambers because the library was too small, and we, and we couldn't fit everybody in there anymore, and then we moved it here, and it's already too small. So Performing Arts Center, that's something that we should be thinking about. Anyways, the, thank you to the Arts Commission for putting on a fabulous show. This is the first year a friend of mine entered and, and got accepted, the husband of a very good friend, so that was great. And then this afternoon, I attended the bus tour with the state legislators for transit-oriented development projects. I wanted to just mention that the council member Woodard and Murray's, I don't have that in my calendar yet, I was going to put it in, but David Newort wrote a book called Strawberry Days, and it's about the Japanese Americans and how they cleared the timber in Bellevue and made Bellevue what it is today, and then it got all taken away from them when it got sent to camp. So, very, very interesting book, and I want to, I know David, I've talked to him, but I've never met him, so I do want to attend that. And I think that is the end of my report. So, anyone else? We're on to new business. Councilmember Sonmore?
Thank you. I just want to point out, and I'm hoping we can get it on our next agenda, that we actually now have formally passed having our meetings on Thursday, and what I understand, it will not happen until next month, and so if we could go over, you know, it doesn't have to be a big report, but just so, if you are looking for an agenda item, it's transparent, because if you look right now, if you see our manual, you won't know that we actually changed our meetings, so it would be nice to have that as an agenda item, just to discuss how our meetings will go in, in November, because what I understand, we'll meet on the 2nd, and that will be a council meeting, because it's the first and third, or Thursdays of the month now, and then the 9th will be a work session, and the 16th will be a council meeting, and then the 23rd would be council, because it's Thanksgiving, and so maybe if we could go over that, and then just explain what it means to the council and staff by moving that, so it's more transparent to our residents. That's all I have.
Yeah, we, we have a very robust communications plan, pre-planned for, for the changing of the meetings, making sure that everybody is well-aware, and I will run down what the calendar looks like going forward, just to, just to make it clear and transparent to everyone.
So were those days correct? We're meeting the 2nd, 9th, and 16th of next month?
Yes, looking at the calendar on my phone, that's, that looks like it's correct.
On the, on the 4th, which is Thanksgiving, are we meeting on a different day, or are we just skipping that week?
No, the, the 4th Thursday is, if a holiday falls on the 4th Thursday, it's typically a work session. So unless there's a pressing matter, I don't think it would be necessary for council to meet. If there's a pressing matter, we'll have a meeting earlier in the week, usually Wednesday.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? We're on new business. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone can sit back. So I want to first say by, start by saying thank you to our DEIC chair for raising in very frustrating, I think that's the word I want to use. I've been thinking about this all day, and then I had to throw it out, because he covered what I needed to cover, and I don't need to mess with his words, but I do need to formalize those words from the council's perspective. So I wanted to start with a thank you for acknowledging the vandalism, let's just keep it simple, the vandalism, but I did need to clarify something that he stated, which was, he referenced a photo, I took that photo, and it was here at what I would call the drive into City Hall, into this road, 232nd and 56th. However, it was not the only incident. In fact, that's where my frustration comes in, because I had a colleague inform me that they had identified some damaged signs, and I said, oh, you know, report it to the city, and I had to go about my day, because I was busy, which I get, everybody is busy. So then I have a handful of days later, for it to be right there, I said to myself, well, hell, is that because I didn't make a big stink of the first ones? So I'm not putting this all on Steve's shoulders, I'm putting it on speaking up. That's the theme of today, speaking up, and there will be consequences for speaking up, so it's also why I'm shifting what I wanted to say today, but I do, but it'd be clear that this is a rider to what our chair said during the public comments section. Everything he said should just move forward, and now let's pick it up at this idea of vandalism. Let us first be clear that it is a misdemeanor in the state of Washington to vandalize a political sign. That is not room for discussion, that is not room for interpretation. Now you can say, maybe the wind blew it down, so let's just look at the photo, if you ever get a chance, it's on multiple sites, including my own, and you will see, it is not only ripped as a sign, but the stake itself is destroyed, right? And placed amongst, back amongst all of the other very well-taken care of signs, not so much as leaning to the left, they're fine. So let's go with, maybe it was a weird tornado strike, because that's my next phase. And I'm speaking now to anyone out there who has ever wondered, should they speak up and thought, hmm, maybe this is going to bring heat to my family, maybe it's going to make people mad at me, maybe this, it's going to happen, promise you. Speak up. Now that said, I want to let you know, when I did speak up and point this out, I said this was under the cover of racism. I don't think you should justify or accept vandalism at any time, but damn sure not when it's the cover for what clearly, at minimum, should be considered overtones of racism and/or misogyny, as was pointed out. Now I think it's ironic that to get your judge candidate elected, you're engaging in illegal activities, but nonetheless, this is about letting others have a voice, not putting yours in front of others, and I love that I have a microphone to override whoever's out there vandalizing, and I am sure you're coming for me when it's my turn, so I'm speaking to you preemptively. No one should be tolerating any signs destroyed, be they Fortneys', be they, fill in the blank who you think is controversial, be they Andersons', it is a crime, period, and this city should not tolerate that, especially openly on your ride into your city hall, because the next one to be destroyed is going to be actually across the street, because clearly somebody is trying to send a message here. Now that said, going back to this idea of, should I speak up, should I not, I don't want you going to have to, I had been, first of all, the favorite, the favorite, what's your evidence? Well, let's see, they did it on the cover of darkness, I just described clearly what was going on, or you could do something crazy, like Reed. See what she's talking about? And what I see that she's talking about is unity, voices that haven't been heard, and we can keep going down that list, and then I have to pause and reflect, as they say, who hates that message? Put it out there. That's my evidence, common sense, or in the words of Steve Martin, who coined it so long ago, to point, point out to how oblivious you can be when these matters, cans, he hates these cans. I'm not sure what you have to do to show that there's something else going on here. Now that said, any signs being destroyed, because here's what I know, you start destroying my signs, someone says, well, I'm going to destroy your signs, that is a basic eye-for-an-eye principle, it's in the dang Bible. I said dang, I apologize, I also said bible from here, so that's two fouls against me. Common courtesy, folks, that's all we're looking for here, but I didn't get that, so just so you all know, I was also accused of being divisive, I suspect I'm being divisive right now. The mayor, for the record, by saying she wanted to meet that author who had the nerve to talk about what happened in Bellevue, that's divisive, don't tell me what happened in Bellevue, how dare you. And then you alluded to something else, relocation, stolen, stop, can't we all just get along? Well, if we do, be ready to be known as godless, brainwashed, evil people, and a fool, I got the double whammy, all while doing that with a Trump 2020, I was your cover photo, which I thought was hilarious. hilarious on many levels. How am I having this as a con, actual honest conversation with somebody who's just name-calling? That's too bad. You're also going to get the, I don't see it, which by definition is a microaggression. You don't see it, because you don't have to see it. What you don't know is, I passed that sign on my way to go get something done, and had to let it be until I came back and parked and get out and do it. But it stayed with me the whole time. It's not even my sign. It's the implications of, how many other people have just walked by and left this sitting here? How about this, don't be, how about this, be proud of your city and not leave trash around? Now, again, this wasn't the speech I wanted to give you. That's why I'm just kind of like, very frustrated, because there's so much more that needs to be said. But what I will say is, I'm very happy that there were quite a few people, and I do mean way more, let's just say 99%, who absolutely gave everything from, what is going on, to calling out what they see, to at least is saying, this is not going to happen in our city. So I do want to acknowledge that there was a whole lot of good in that small minority of voices who did actually honestly engage with me. We left the internet agreeing that we can see that this is wrong. We might not agree on why they did it, and your burden of proof, I'm never going to be able to, to, to get to you, but we can at least agree that the vandalism is wrong. That said, two requests, one of which I'm very proud of my city for already working on, which, for you at home, know that, as soon as I saw it, as soon as I went to the internet, my next move wasn't to go off to the next thing, it was to call our city manager and then make it clear what's going on. Also to give a heads up that I was going to have this conversation, and end with, I, as our chair had pointed out, absolutely think that this city needs to make a statement. If they can't push it so far as to say we won't tolerate racist misogynist acts, we should at least say we will not tolerate vandalism. Because I assure you, it starts here and it just grows. And we are headed into some pretty nasty times, but let's not follow suit and just say, well, that's how it is. Let's actually, as a city, say, we are not playing that game in this city. It's not, not in this county, for sure. So let's do something about that. And I do appreciate that. I, you know, that said, I will just leave it there. I'm personally also, just so you all are aware of it, going to reach out to Judge Moriarty's team and say, I think that they should condemn this just as we are. Because it's actually their race, not mine. I'm just looking out for our city and what that means to our res, as you all are doing as well, what that means to our residents to know that if we see acts of what I would at minimum call hate, we can agree that you don't just randomly destroy stuff because you loved it. So let's at least acknowledge the hate that was there in the form of the vandalism. We got to at least say that's not happening here, and we can push forward from there, being the, the next set of moves. And again, I, we'll leave it at frustration or anything else, but also temper that with very proud of our city for that 99% who immediately saw what was wrong, immediately had something to say, and then also helped bring that other half of the half percent, 1% along with us. You're not going to reach everyone, I understand that. So, that's enough for me, just for the moment. And quote me however you need to, or more importantly, come and have a conversation with me. I prefer that. Standing out in the open, apparently on Thursdays now, not Mondays and Thursdays. Not hard to find me.
I just want to say that, in the past, we have had sign wars. Haven't we? And I can tell you what happened in the past. So, and we're not allowed to touch those signs. So, that's one of the reasons why I think some people don't pick anything up, because we're not allowed to touch them. Okay. Anyone else? All right.
Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to make sure that, that we have a, an action item, or, you know, with staff, if we can just confirm that, that there is a statement being, being drafted, to, to sort of make it clear about political speech and, and, you know, destruction of, of signs. I, I think we should all take what Councilmember Woodard is saying very seriously, and it's beyond frustrating to, to see flash signs in the street. So I, I, just perhaps if we can get a, a follow-up on, on a statement from the city, that'd be helpful.
So, yes, we are working on a statement absolutely condemning that type of activity in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. We will circulate that to council tomorrow, just to make sure that we've captured the appropriate tone, and then issue the statement shortly thereafter.
Anyone else? Councilmember Sonmore.
Just to chime in on that conversation, it's something that should be automatically something that we do every year in our newsletter. I know we only, we don't have them as much as we used to, but it should be a standard item that we put into our newsletter, so we're constantly educating people about those signs. I know it seems to some people it's not a big deal, but like the mayor said, we've, we've had some pretty strange things go on with signs before. And it can be very scary, and it can leave you feeling very vulnerable and afraid. And so, it's nice to educate people on what it actually means.
Anyone else? All right. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned.[1787.97][1787.97]